The out in the world. That Guide Dog started off in the home of a volunteer puppy raiser, and we always need volunteer puppy raisers to join our program.
They become a member of your family, and they become part of your heart.
You have people who can't see or going through cancer, who can't use their senses, mobility and everything like that. What better than a beautiful puppy with more love in their heart than anything in this world to show you the way?
For more info on becoming a volunteer, visit guidedogsofamerica.org. As part of a continuous effort to clean up South Los Angeles, Councilman Corrin Price kicked off Don't Trash CD9, a local challenge pitting high school students against one another for a chance to win $5,000.
I take two buses just to get to school, and I notice how there's trash everywhere in our community, and I really want to put an end to it.
Every month for the next five months through May of next year, it'll be a monthly challenge that the schools will be competing for. The thought was, well, let's get our youth involved in a way that gives them some incentives to go out and spread the word and do what's important. And we know how important youth are in helping to provide leadership in a number of issues, number of areas, including the environment.
Every single day as I walk in the streets, I see a lot of trash, pollution, et cetera. Now, this is a big problem in my community and in everybody else's community, especially South Central. If you come to our campus, you will not find a single piece of trash in our floor because we are very prideful and we are full of love. We love the earth and we love each other.
The school that records the most number 311 service requests is going to be the winner of the month. It's pretty straightforward, right? If you see some trash, what are you gonna do? You're gonna report it.
It's critical currently since all the homeless encampments and graffiti and trash on the streets to keep their communities clean. And we're here, 311 is here to assist them.
The effort is meant to spark a movement driven by teenagers to help keep their neighborhoods clean. Thousands of young people take to the streets in downtown LA for a climate rally. Council President Herb Weston takes a bold move to spur more affordable housing in LA, and a new fire station opens its doors in Van Nuys. All this in City View. Hundreds of climate activists gathered outside City Hall protesting oil drilling and fossil fuel production. The activists marched from City Hall to Governor Gavin Newsom's Los Angeles office. 16-year-old Swedish teen Greta Thunberg was the keynote speaker at the rally. Thunberg has become the face of the climate crisis, organizing dozens of other protests in her country.
I will never understand how they can put short-term interests above human lives, above the planet itself, and our very future.
I think this is the best kind of education for them to get, to be really directly involved in activism, and again, learn how to speak for themselves.
To join forces with all these wonderful people, to sort of magnify our voice and let it be known that we care and we have to move away from fossil, we have to make change.
LA City Council President Herb Weston has introduced a new motion to restrict the use of city-owned land classified for housing purposes to development of 100% affordable housing units. The motion will be sent to the Housing Committee, where it will be expected to be heard in the coming weeks. After championing the construction of a much-needed state-of-the-art fire station to serve Van Nuys and the San Fernando Valley, Councilwoman Nuri Martinez joined LAFD Chief Ralph Tarazas and Councilmember Paul Kokorian for the grand opening of Fire Station 39. The event also included a pancake breakfast with community members. Folks in Pacoima, along with Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez, came together for a two-day Dia de los Muertos festival to honor their loved ones and celebrate family.
This Dia de los Muertos celebration is our third annual. It really is a unique opportunity for the community to come together and celebrate the stories and the legacies of the many family members that we want to pay tribute to and have made such an indelible mark in our lives.
By offering this tradition, we're basically offering remembrance to our ancestors.
And that's what makes this event so beautiful because it crosses cultural boundaries. It makes sure that everyone can tell the story of those members of the families that we've loved, and I think it keeps their memories alive, and that's what Dia de los Muertos is all about.
It's just a good way to, just to help people heal and remember those who we've lost. The aroma of the marigold and the burning of incense, the music, there's Pan de Muerto, there's water. So when the soul reaches here, it has water, it has something to eat.
When I lost my grandma, she was very important to me, and I still keep her alive with this tradition going on every year. And people that passed now, we still put their picture, and then we still make them live in our hearts and remember them.
It's nice that they could come visit us on this day.
For those who couldn't make it to Pacoima for the festivities, there were plenty of Dia de los Muertos action in downtown LA at the Grand Avenue All-Access Arts Event.
The LA Opera is excited to be a part of the annual Grand Avenue Arts Celebration. It's a once-a-year celebration where all of the arts organizations on Grand Avenue get together and have open houses for the community. Grand Park is having a wonderful event for Dia de los Muertos, which is a part of the Music Center. But all together, it's just a big celebration on everything going on.
It's our culture. We've had family members that have passed away, so we want to keep their memory alive. So we dress up and do their faces, half of it life and half of it death.
I think it's great. We were just down on Alvera Street. It was beautiful, it was happening, it was people. I love the honoring of all of the people that came before us.
Ethnically, I am Middle Eastern. I'm from Iran. My culture doesn't have anything like this that parallels it so much. So coming out here to kind of see what Dia de los Muertos is all about. I have a lot of friends that do celebrate it, so it was kind of neat to see what their culture is all about.
In Las Feliz, art and community came together for a day of self-expression and creativity at a very unique art festival.
It's important for me to be here today just to celebrate the art, the community, and a sense of commitment and connection to the neighborhood.
Everyone has their own opinion and views on what they feel is art and/or beautiful, and it's these little things in life that you don't necessarily focus on that bring joy to people. Whether it's like looking at a nice painting or listening to some good music, I feel like it's good for oneself.
The Festival for All Skid Row Artists is a two-day block party of performing and visual art with plenty of music, showcasing the diverse range of talents among Skid Row residents.
The Los Angeles Poverty Department is an arts group based in Skid Row. And about 10 years ago, we reacted to the fact that there's not enough opportunity for artists in Skid Row. Everybody who's in here, living, performing, lives in the community, whether they live inside or whether they live outside, they're members of the community. Beautiful thing is there are a lot of people who participate regularly, but an equally beautiful thing is there are people who've never been here before. They come, they get involved, and they get hooked up with other things in the neighborhood. And it makes a lot of connections on a person-to-person level.
You know, a lot of people are sad down here. They're without their families and friends. I mean, you know, they have felt, a lot of people have felt short of their glory, but we bring them back together and stand them back up. And then they say, what do I do now? Well, we ask them, what's your talent? Today is a very important day for people to come together in Skid Row. People that live down here in apartments, on the streets, in tents. We are a family down here. So this is our opportunity to come together and party and have a wonderful time. Slept in a doorway for eight years when I got out of my first marriage. I lost everything. And when I come down here, I feel like I'm a part of. They give me courage and strength to keep believing in myself.
These events help to display the positive aspects of community because we are a community.
If these people can come and give their love and their time, I think I can do it too, because I think we've all been there, but we came back to give back.
Enjoy a Medusa musical, get your heart pumping with 10 Days of Modern Dance, and indulge your sweet tooth at a dessert festival. All this and things to do. The Getty Villa and Death West Theater are proud to present Medusa, a musical. The young, reluctant, and deaf hero Perseus embarks on a perilous quest to slay the snake-haired Medusa. This epic showdown between Perseus and Medusa comes to life as a musical fantasy told in Death West Theater's signature style of singing and signing. Don't miss Medusa the Musical, happening November 16th and 17th at the Getty Villa. For more info, visit getty.edu. The LA Dance Project presents LA Dances, a festival presenting historical and contemporary works. The event features 10 Los Angeles premieres of dance works that showcase collaborations with LA-based visual artists. LA Dances is the LA Dance Project's dedication to the city it calls home and its creative collaborators. So be sure to check out LA Dances Festival. For details, visit ladanceproject.org. Because dessert is always a good idea, Dessert Goals is back with the Los Angeles Dessert Fest. So what's in store for 2019? The Di Tiki Edition. Angelenos will see one of the biggest festivals yet over two back-to-back weekends. So get your tie dye and tropical prints ready and meet, or drop by the Los Angeles Dessert Fest at Evolve Project and Echo Park on November 9th, 10th, 16th, and 17th. The festivities begin at noon each day. To get more info, visit their listing on Eventbrite. Ladies, get ready for Intro to Action Filmmaking for Female Filmmakers. This workshop moderated by the Camara Project's founding member, America Young, is focused on helping to bring more women to the action genre. Attend a panel of pro stunt coordinators offering their invaluable insight and experience. Then take part in an educational demo with pro stunt performers on how to shoot a simple fight scene. Select attendees will have hands-on experience filming with our pro guests. Intro to Action Filmmaking for Female Filmmakers happens Saturday, November 16th. For tickets, visit their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
Good morning, good morning. If everyone would please take their seats. Everybody, please take their seats. Today is Tuesday, November 13th, and I want to welcome you to City Hall, to this Los Angeles City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sidio, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, Solfero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes?
Mr. Weezer moves with Mr. Rue's seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Lee moves, and Mr. Bloomingfield's seconds. Please continue.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue from yesterday's meeting, item number 1E, and that is council file 19-0160-S104.
So we vote on reconsideration and then continue it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let us vote on reconsideration. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And, Mr. President, the request is to continue this item to December 11, 2019, sir.
Okay, so ordered unless there's an objection. Okay, continue.
Items one through 11 are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right, let's prepare. Let's prepare to vote on that item.
Mr. President, I believe Mr. Krikorian wants to speak.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that we continue item number seven until Friday, November 15th.
Okay, without objection, so ordered.
So, Mr. President, that means items one through six, seven, oh, I'm sorry, eight through 11 are available for voting, sir.
Okay, let's, on those items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, please continue.
Mr. President, the ordinance for number—
Oh, you know, before we do that, if we could send item 11 forthwith. Okay, now, continue.
Mr. President, the ordinance for item number two is carried over to November 26 unless reconsidered with 12 members present. And next are items 12 through 16, and those are items scheduled for closed session.
I'll defer to Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and Finance has considered items 12 through 16. Each is a routine settlement that can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns. Budget and Finance recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations as to each matter.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, let's read or go through those items, and then we'll prepare for a vote.
Yes, sir. Item number 12 in the matter between Gregory Williams versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $175,000 in settlement. Item number 13 in the case entitled Lisa Brescher versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $150,000 in settlement. Item number 14 in the case entitled Jennifer Dulaless versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $400,000 in settlement. Item number 15 in the case entitled Robert Cave and Susan Cave versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $500,000 in settlement. And finally, item number 16 in the case entitled California Automobile Insurance Company versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $180,000 in settlement, sir.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on these items. If you would open the roll, close the roll, now tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, please continue.
Mr. President, the ordinance for number—
Oh, you know, before we do that, if we could send item 11 forthwith. Okay, now, continue.
Mr. President, the ordinance for item number two is carried over to November 26 unless reconsidered with 12 members present. And next are items 12 through 16, and those are items scheduled for closed session.
I'll defer to Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and Finance has considered items 12 through 16. Each is a routine settlement that can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns. Budget and Finance recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations as to each matter.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, let's read or go through those items, and then we'll prepare for a vote.
Yes, sir. Item number 12 in the matter between Gregory Williams versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $175,000 in settlement. Item number 13 in the case entitled Lisa Brescher versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $150,000 in settlement. Item number 14 in the case entitled Jennifer Dulaless versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $400,000 in settlement. Item number 15 in the case entitled Robert Cave and Susan Cave versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $500,000 in settlement. And finally, item number 16 in the case entitled California Automobile Insurance Company versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $180,000 in settlement, sir.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on these items. If you would open the roll, close the roll, now tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. And if we could send, going back, send item number two forthwith at the request of DWP.
Yes, sir, but that item has an ordinance, so that ordinance will be carried over to November 26, sir, unless reconsidered with 12 members—
Okay, remind me, remind me if we get to 12, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to recognize Mr. Bloomingfield for an intro.
Thank you. You know, colleagues, it's always nice when we have colleagues from around the country who do the work that we do, to acknowledge them and bring them up. But I just met, come on up, John, a colleague from, all the way from Anchorage, who is here visiting Los Angeles. He is on the Anchorage Assembly, which is what they consider their city councils, they run their city, and they share, we were talking, a lot of the same issues, crime, homelessness, and then when it comes to climate change, if anybody has any doubt whether climate change is real, talk to him because they're seeing it firsthand every day. Just wanted to give him a minute to say hello to Los Angeles. So, John, please.
Welcome, colleague. Let's give him a round of applause. Welcome, sir.
Well, thank you. This is the first time I've been to Los Angeles. Been to California many times, but this is really an amazing city. I'm just down here for five days, holding my daughter's hand while she visits a doctor, and it's nothing serious, so. But I've kind of become a hobbyist over the years of how the cities develop, and you've developed a long ways from where Anchorage is. And I look at neighborhoods and so on, and you've got amazing buildings here. I look and kind of get a sense of crime, and I talked to Captain Williams on the way in here, and he said you're actually at all-time Lowe's. And I'll tell you, as a tourist, I actually feel very safe here. We have, like you do, homeless issues, and the sense here is somewhat similar to Anchorage. But I know there are big sections here, I don't see any of it, and in Anchorage, it's pretty pervasive. So, actually, while I'm here, if anyone wants to talk about homelessness and how we're going to fix that, let me know. You know, the issues are very, very similar between the two cities, so I look forward to learning more while I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have 12 members. Why don't we dispense with those items?
That would be reconsideration of item number two, sir.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now, let's vote on the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And, Mr. President, there's a request for item two to go forthwith, sir.
So ordered. Mr. Lee, for presentation.
Mr. President, colleagues, I'm here to recognize Do San An Chang Ho Day in the City of Los Angeles. Do San An Chang Ho was a Korean independence leader who was born on November 9, 1878. He was educated by American missionaries, which gave him a desire to come to America. He arrived in San Francisco on October 14, 1902, moving to Riverside in 1903, and then moving eventually to Los Angeles in 1914. Do San An Chang Ho helped and organized the early Korean immigrants who came to the United States, established the first organized Korean-American settlement, Korean National Association, and a labor agency. We credit his organizational leadership for the success of the Korean-American community within California. Personally, I don't know if my parents would have had the opportunity to come here if it wasn't for him. When Korea was annexed and occupied by Japan from 1910 to 1945, Do San An Chang Ho spearheaded the Korean independence movement. His goal was for Koreans to promote and adopt democracy. His influence and actions helped Koreans understand the importance of a free nation. The Korean-American immigrant experience was vastly enhanced by Do San An Chang Ho's leadership. Even today, his pioneering and patriotic spirit still lives in the minds of all Korean immigrants. He is regarded as one of the most significant patriotic figures by Koreans here and abroad. His original home in L.A. has been made into a historic cultural monument. He has a post office and a freeway interchange named after him. And the state of California has officially declared November 9 as Do San An Chang Ho Day. And before I present this resolution declaring November 9 as Do San An Chang Ho Day here in Los Angeles, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Councilman Rue.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee, and thank you for your leadership, and thank you for bringing the very first Do San An Chang Ho Day to Los Angeles City Hall and to the City of Los Angeles. If we could give our colleague a round of applause. And of course, a special thanks to Ralph On, the oldest surviving, only surviving son of Do San An Chang Ho, for coming to not just today's event, but pretty much every event in regards to the Korean-American community, and of course, our very own community leader, Dr. Mike Myung Gi-hong, and of course, Young Shin Kwan, Chairman of the Korean National Association, and Laura John, President of the Korean American Federation of Los Angeles, for joining us all today. Because today, we are celebrating a leader for Koreans around the world, and a patriot in the cause of freedom and self-determination. One hundred years ago, Korea was not a free nation, but lived under the rule of Imperial Japan, and suffered many injustices. But one man, named Do San An Chang Ho, who was one of the first Koreans to immigrate to the United States, led a global movement of resistance and independence to Korea, for Korea. For right here in California, Do San An Chang Ho organized early Korean immigrants, established the Korean National Association, and birthed the movement that was heard around the world for Korean independence. He believed at its core that the common people decided the fate of a nation, not a colonial government. He not only led the fight for freedom, but awoke a spirit of inner strength and community consciousness and good citizenship in the hearts of every Korean. He believed that the only way to build a strong nation was to build and value, was to build strength and value in every citizen. These values are what created a successful provisional government while Korea was under occupation. They are the values that shaped the Free Korean Constitution, and they are the values that safeguard a democracy. All Koreans around the world owe a debt of gratitude to Do San An Chang Ho, and I personally look up to him as an example of service and sacrifice. He left his family behind to go to Korea and fight for freedom. It couldn't have been easy for him to leave his life behind with an uncertain future, but he did, to ensure a better future for every generation that followed him.
Item 12 through 16, each is a routine settlement that can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns. Budget and Finance recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations as to each matter.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, let's read or go through those items and then we'll prepare for a vote.
Yes, sir. Item number 12 in the matter between Gregory Williams versus City of Los Angeles at all, there is a recommendation to expend up to $175,000 in settlement. Item number 13 in the case entitled Lisa Brescher versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $150,000 in settlement. Item number 14 in the case entitled Jennifer Dulaless versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $400,000 in settlement. Item number 15 in the case entitled Robert Cave and Susan Cave versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $500,000 in settlement. And finally, item number 16 in the case entitled California Automobile Insurance Company versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $180,000 in settlement, sir.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on these items. If you would open the roll, close the roll, now tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. And if we could send, going back, send item number two forthwith at the request of DWP.
Yes, sir, but that item has an ordinance, so that ordinance will be carried over till November 26th, sir, unless reconsidered with 12 members.
Okay, remind me if we get to 12, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to recognize Mr. Blumenfield for an intro.
Thank you. You know, colleagues, it's always nice when we have colleagues from around the country who do the work that we do to acknowledge them and bring them up, but I just met, come on up, John, a colleague from, all the way from Anchorage, who is here visiting Los Angeles. He is on the Anchorage Assembly, which is what they consider their city councils, they run their city, and they share, we were talking, a lot of the same issues, crime, homelessness, and then when it comes to climate change, if anybody has any doubt whether climate change is real, talk to him because they're seeing it firsthand every day. Just wanted to give him a minute to say hello to Los Angeles. So, John, please.
Welcome, colleague. Let's give him a round of applause. Welcome, sir.
Well, thank you. This is the first time I've been to Los Angeles. Been California many times, but this is really an amazing city. I'm just down here for five days, holding my daughter's hand while she visits a doctor, and it's nothing serious, so. But I've kind of become a hobbyist over the years of how the cities develop, and you've developed a long ways from where Anchorage is, and I look at neighborhoods and so on, and you've got amazing buildings here. I look and kind of get a sense of crime, and I talked to Captain Williams on the way in here, and he said you're actually at all-time lows, and I'll tell you, as a tourist, I actually feel very safe here. We have, like you do, homeless issues, and the sense here is somewhat similar to Anchorage, but I know there are big sections here, I don't see any of it, and in Anchorage, it's pretty pervasive. So, actually, while I'm here, if anyone wants to talk about homelessness and how we're going to fix that, let me know. You know, the issues are very, very similar between the two cities, so I look forward to learning more while I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have 12 members. Why don't we dispense with those items?
That would be reconsideration of item number two, sir.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now, let's vote on the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And, Mr. President, there's a request for item two to go forthwith, sir.
Mr. Lee for presentation.
Mr. President, colleagues, I'm here to recognize Doosan An Chang Ho Day in the City of Los Angeles. Doosan An Chang Ho was a Korean independence leader who was born on November 9th, 1878. He was educated by American missionaries, which gave him a desire to come to America. He arrived in San Francisco on October 14th, 1902, moving to Riverside in 1903, and then moving eventually to Los Angeles in 1914. Doosan An Chang Ho helped and organized the early Korean immigrants who came to the United States, established the first organized Korean-American settlement, Korean National Association, and Labor Agency. We credit his organizational leadership for the success of the Korean-American community within California. Personally, I don't know if my parents would have had the opportunity to come here if it wasn't for him. When Korea was annexed and occupied by Japan from 1910 to 1945, Doosan An Chang Ho spearheaded the Korean independence movement. His goal was for Koreans to promote and adopt democracy. His influence and actions helped Koreans understand the importance of a free nation. The Korean-American immigrant experience was vastly enhanced by Doosan An Chang Ho's leadership. Even today, his pioneering and patriotic spirit still lives in the minds of all Korean immigrants. He is regarded as one of the most significant patriotic figures by Koreans here and abroad. His original home in L.A. has been made into a historic cultural monument. He has a post office and a freeway interchange named after him, and the state of California has officially declared November 9th as Doosan An Chang Ho Day. And before I present this resolution declaring November 9th as Doosan An Chang Ho Day here in Los Angeles, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Councilman Ru.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee, and thank you for your leadership, and thank you for bringing the very first Doosan An Chang Ho Day to Los Angeles City Hall and to the City of Los Angeles. If we could give our colleague a round of applause. And of course, a special thanks to Ralph On, the oldest surviving, only surviving son of Doosan An Chang Ho, for coming to not just today's event, but pretty much every event in regards to the Korean-American community, and of course, our very own community leader, Dr. Mike Myung Gi Hong, and of course, Young Shin Kwan, Chairman of the Korean National Association, and Laura John, President of the Korean American Federation of Los Angeles, for joining us all today. Because today, we are celebrating a leader for Koreans around the world and a patriot in the cause of freedom and self-determination. 100 years ago, Korea was not a free nation, but lived under the rule of Imperial Japan and suffered many injustices. But one man named Doosan An Chang Ho, who was one of the first Koreans to immigrate to the United States, led a global movement of resistance and independence to Korea, for Korea. For right here in California, Doosan An Chang Ho organized early Korean immigrants, established the Korean National Association, and birthed the movement that was heard around the world for Korean independence. He believed at its core that the common people decided the fate of a nation, not a colonial government. He not only led the fight for freedom, but awoke a spirit of inner strength and community consciousness and good citizenship in the hearts of every Korean. He believed that the only way to build a strong nation was to build and value, was to build strength and value in every citizen. These values are what created a successful provisional government while Korea was under occupation. They are the values that shaped the Free Korean Constitution, and they are the values that safeguard a democracy. All Koreans around the world owe a debt of gratitude to Doosan An Chang Ho, and I personally look up to him as an example of service and sacrifice. He left his family behind to go to Korea and fight for freedom. It couldn't have been easy for him to leave his life behind with an uncertain future, but he did, to ensure a better future for every generation that followed him. My life and the life of countless others were only made possible by the sacrifices of those who came before, and I think all of us in public service can look to the legacy of Doosan An Chang Ho for what it means to lead. Thank you. And if I... Yeah, we'll have to present it. So, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles declaring Doosan An Chang Ho Day in the City of Los Angeles, I'd like to present this certificate to his son Ralph. And then, Ralph, if you can say a few words. Let's take photos. And Ralph, if you wouldn't mind saying a few words.
Welcome, sir.
Mr. President and honorable council members, we want to thank you for observing this day, because it is so fitting that Los Angeles honor our father, Doosan An Chang Ho. In 1913, after Japan had occupied Korea, he gathered his friends to form the Hunseodan, and they formed their first headquarters in Los Angeles up here at First and Figaro. And they set down their parameters that in order to regain their independence and maintain their independence, they had to learn all the aspects that they have observed here in the United States of where people were the sovereignty rather than the monarchy from where they came. And so, they set down the principles that they had learned, that they must imbue the principles of truth, integrity, and love for each other so that a republic may endure. And in 1919, they sent our father to form the Korean provisional government. They financed the first provisional government and made it endure. And that provisional government was the foundation of today's Republic of Korea, a free and independent democratic nation, so which we are grateful. And so, Mr. President and council members, we thank you, but we humbly submit that the spirit of Doosan has enhanced our patriotism and love for this great community of communities called the United States of America. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Dr. Hong, who is the head of the Foundation, if you wouldn't mind saying a few words.
Good morning and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, Doosan, and council members of Los Angeles. Certainly, we are grateful that today is Doosan's Day in Los Angeles. Doosan is simple, simple, humble man, and who was a patriot, educator, orange picker, and all of those. And he was for the people of Korean-American. And today, we are here to celebrate Doosan's Day with all of you here, and we are simply grateful and thank you so much. Thank you.
And finally, Ms. Chen, head of the Korean American Foundation, Federation of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good morning. Honorable Council President Weston and honorable council members, it is my absolute honor and pleasure to be here to thank you for celebrating Doosan An Chang Ho Day. An Chang Ho was born into a farming family on Dorong Island on November 9th, 1878. Doosan was his pen name. Doosan An Chang Ho was one of Korea's most eminent leaders. He was a patriotic revolutionary, a statesman, an educator, and a prominent thinker who devoted his entire life to the liberation of Korean people from Japanese imperialism. An Chang Ho is also a historic figure in America. He arrived in San Francisco on October 14th, 902, and spent 13 years of his life in the U.S., primarily in California. Doosan An Chang Ho was called "Los Angeles Home" and continued the Korean independence movement. One of the first Korean Angelinos and community leaders, he established the Korean National Association in 1909, which acted a provisional Korean government in the U.S. when Korea was under Japanese rule. After Korea was liberated on August 15th, 1945, the Korean National Association evolved into CAFLA, the presently called the Korean American Federation of Los Angeles, where I'm the president now. Doosan An Chang Ho died at the age of 59 on March 10, 1938, after being imprisoned and tortured by the Japanese. He was persecuted for his patriotism and the complete love of his country and his people. The Korean-American immigrant experience was greatly enhanced by An Chang Ho's leadership. His unrelenting patriotic spirit still lives on and in the hearts and minds of Korean-Americans today. So, on behalf of CAFLA and the entire Korean-American community, I'd like to commend the honorable Council President Weston and council members for commemorating Doosan An Chang Ho Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, colleagues, and joining me and Councilman Ru, this is a very important day in honoring a hero for all Korean-American immigrants. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and colleagues. Last week in council, we celebrated the Marine Corps birthday, and today, it's a great privilege to be able to recognize all of those who've served in the uniform of the United States as we once again celebrate Veterans' Day here in the City Council of Los Angeles. And so, before we begin, Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to ask all of those who have served our country in uniform to stand or to raise your hand so that we can all appropriately recognize the great veterans who've served the United States of America, not only our honorees, but everybody who's served. Mr. President, throughout our country, in town squares and state capitals, there are great monuments to military and political leaders who've somehow changed the arc of history for the country. But Veterans' Day reminds us that all of the great achievements by the famous are made possible by people whose names history doesn't mark. The police officers and the mail carriers, the nurses and the teachers, the students and the mechanics who stepped up to defend our country. On Veterans' Day, we honor ordinary Americans who could have stayed home and lived a comfortable life with their families and friends, but instead, they answered our country's call. Every American who dons the uniform of the United States Armed Forces in peacetime and in war earns an honored place in a long and strong chain of sacrifice that connects one generation of ordinary American heroes to the next. It's a chain that began when the farmers have conquered, picked up their muskets, and forced the king's troops to retreat at the North Bridge. It's a chain whose links extended through Valley Forge, through Gettysburg, through Belleau Wood, through Normandy, through Okinawa, and Incheon, and Kaesong, and Fallujah, and Kandahar. And it's a chain that includes all of those who stood watch in peacetime as well. And each of you veterans who are here with us today, and every other American who's formed a link in that chain across all the wars and all the generations, each of you has played an essential part in building the nation that we all love. Throughout our history, the world has certainly changed, and the threats to our country have changed, and so the missions of our armed forces have changed as well. But the valor, the character, and the honor of the men and women in uniform remain constant, and so does the strength of their families who had to sacrifice along with them. Each of them in each generation has left a legacy of freedom, and by example, they remind all of us the value of sacrifice and devotion and service and love of country. We owe our veterans a debt which we can never fully repay, but which we must always strive to repay. We owe them our respect, of course, but respect is not enough. We owe them decent health care and good jobs and a quality education, and we need to end veteran homelessness once and for all. And we need to help all of our veterans heal their wounds, both seen and unseen. All of those who've served remind us of the extraordinary potential of ordinary Americans. They remind us of the cherished principles for which our country stands, and they remind us of the courage and commitment necessary to maintain those principles. They remind us of both the blessings we enjoy and the costs we must bear as citizens of the last best hope of earth. So as we honor these extraordinary men and women today, Mr. President, let's also dedicate ourselves to the never-finished work of building a nation that continues to be worthy of their So, Mr. President, we now have the great privilege of recognizing each of our council members' honorees, Veterans of the Year for each council district. Of course, each of our district is filled with veterans who could be named the Veteran of the Year each and every year, and it's a hard choice for us to pick just one. But the people that we are about to be introduced to through our colleagues really tell the story of the greatness, not only of our military, but of the community of the City of Los Angeles, people who've come home from war, who've come home from service, and continue to serve the public in a variety of ways, to continue to serve their communities, their neighborhoods here in Los Angeles as well. And if I may, as long as I'm going, I'd like to start with our Council District Two honoree, and then we'll just go in order around the horseshoe. And I want to tell you a little bit about Rabbi Israel Hirsch. Rabbi Hirsch was born in Hamburg, Germany in 1933, the same year that Adolf Hitler rose to power. His family, mother, and three siblings left the country in August of 1939, just weeks before Hitler invaded Poland. His father had already left to come to the United States, like so many other immigrant families, to try to establish a home here and be able to bring the family to the United States to join him. But Israel Hirsch and his mom and siblings only got as far as England. Rabbi Hirsch spent the next four years in England during the time of the Blitz, and so he spent most of his formative years in air raid shelters as Nazi bombers laid waste to London.
Mr. Kirkorian, let me interrupt you. Mr. Juarez, don't do that. Please do not. You're disrupting by, this is the Veterans' Time, it's not your time, you will get your opportunity. Sorry, Mr. Kirkorian, back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. In late 1943, Israel's mom wrote a letter to Eleanor Roosevelt, asking the first lady's help in getting passage for the family to the United States so that the family could be reunited with his father. Incredibly, Mrs. Roosevelt received the letter and quietly arranged for that family to travel to the United States on a troop transport ship. The passengers on that ship also included German POWs who taunted the family and other civilians, telling them that, "At the end of the war, we'll take care of you." This is how Rabbi Hirsch's formative years went. When he was 10 years old, he laughed at those German POWs. So, World War II ended, and the reunited Hirsch family here in the United States, like so many other immigrants before and since, were able to settle into their new home, their new lives as Americans. But the World War soon gave way to the Cold War, and in 1954, Israel Hirsch was called by his new country to the Army. He was fluent in German, and so, less than 10 years after the concentration camps were liberated, Israel Hirsch went back to Germany, to, assigned to work with the Army Intelligence in Stuttgart, Germany. The many ruined buildings served as a vivid visual reminder of the war that he'd been able to escape. Israel was a part of a team that interrogated Germans fleeing the Soviet Zone for the American Zone. He and other members of the intelligence unit weren't even allowed to travel to Berlin because there was so much concern that they might be kidnapped by the Soviets and taken to the other side. At the end of his military tenure in 1956, Israel worked for Stars and Stripes, the newspaper of the armed forces. He not only served his adopted country with distinction during the war, but he's done the same for the City of Los Angeles, where he moved in the late 1960s. He became part of Mayor V. Regosa's L.A. Crisis Response Team, and then in 2002, Israel moved to North Hollywood and soon became affiliated with the North Hollywood Police Station, where he's part of the Police Advisory Board for Chaplains. He's involved in ceremonial duties, including graduations of police officers, and he performs Jewish funerals for officers and other denominations as well. At 86 years old, Israel Hirsch is continuing to serve his community, his congregation, his neighbors, and the LAPD recently asked him to be part of a clergy group that operates out of Valley Bureau so he can serve the entire San Fernando Valley. Today, I'm proud to honor Rabbi Israel Hirsch, a distinguished veteran of the U.S. military and a dedicated member of our community, who unfortunately, at 86, could not be here with us today to be personally honored because he's traveled to New York to be with his family at the birth of his great-grandchild in New York. But I'm pleased to recognize Rabbi Israel Hirsch as our Veteran of the Year for the Second Council District. And so, next, I'd like to ask Mr. Sadio if you'd like to begin with the veteran for Council District One.
Well, as you all know, every day in my household was Veterans' Day. When you grow up, and this is your father, a proud 82nd Airborne boxer, cook, you don't have much to say about what day it is, it's Veterans' Day every single day. In making our decision, you should know that there's a rich history in northeast Los Angeles of veterans, and, you know, names came to mind like Professor Alwadis, a former Tom Bradley staffer, or Sam Paz, the great civil rights lawyer. They're all from the Northeast and proudly served our country. But we settled on someone, and of course, Al Strange, I'm surprised you're not on our list, because you're one of my favorites, and, you know, at least IHOP would have nominated you. So, there are many options, but we chose somebody really special, really significant, somebody who deserves this acknowledgement. Staff Sergeant Stephanie Minneto Jackson, served in the Army for 10 years from 2008 to 2018. She was deployed to Afghanistan as part of Operation Enduring Freedom from 2010 to 2011, where she served with the 86th Expeditionary Signal Battalion of the 11th Signal Brigade. Later, she was deployed to Iraq with the 40th Expeditionary Signal Battalion. Later, she was deployed to Iraq with the 40th Expeditionary Signal Battalion, 160th Signal Brigade, as part of Operation Inherent Resolve. During this time, she was part of the second wave of American troops deployed to Iraq in response to ISIS capturing the city of Mosul. She's been recognized many times, receiving the Army Commendation Medal four times, the National Defense Service Medal, and many others. She married fellow soldier Sergeant Stuart D. Jackson on September 27, 2013. Stephanie and Stuart had two sons together, Dominic and Stuart. Sadly, on December 14, 2017, Stephanie's world came to a screeching halt. She lost her husband and the love of her life in a motorcycle accident. Her roots are deep in Highland Park. She's been there over four decades, and as a Gold Star survivor continues to raise her children in the same community that has welcomed and embraced her family for many years. Her commitment and dedication is demonstrated by her service as president of the Executive Board of the Historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council. She works to ensure that positive changes in the neighborhood benefit all stakeholders in one of the most diverse communities of the city. Her worldly experience is what brings her leadership to the northeast. Her leadership is what brings these diverse communities together. The respect of her commitment is what brings people online of many different backgrounds. As you know, neighborhood councils are very challenging forms of democracy. They're without our decorum and without our seriousness. As a mother, she wants to make sure that the future generations in our community can live in a community that fosters growth, diversity, and fruitful development. Stephanie is really, to use the term, a soldier in our community, because she fights every day to make sure that our communities are safe and secure, and that there is the degree of democratic participation through the neighborhood council and through the various activities to make real the promise of democracy, to make true the commitment of civic engagement. And so, we're very honored to have her here. She is our Veteran of the Year and our Veteran for Life, because she has committed her life to that promise of democracy. Stephanie.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sadio. Next, I'd like to ask Mr. Blumenfeld to please introduce the Veteran of the Year for the Third Council District. Mr. Blumenfeld.
Great, thank you. And Councilmember Kokorian, thank you so much for leading this important celebration today. It is so important that we honor those who have fought to preserve our freedoms and are basically the way we live every day. We have to always give thanks to those who served. So today, I have the privilege of honoring two brave veterans from the southwest San Fernando Valley, one of whom is here with me today, Alfredo Castillo, and he is here with his wonderful wife, Cecilia Castillo. And Alfredo immigrated to the United States from Nicaragua in 1963, and he was here less than two years before he got drafted. And he got drafted into the military in 1965, and he chose to serve as a U.S. Marine. And he was promoted to Corporal. He served in Vietnam from May of 1966 to June of 1967. While he was serving in Vietnam, I was living on a military base with my father, who was in the Air Force in San Antonio as folks came back. And then, on April 67, he was awarded a Silver Star Medal for conspicuous gallantry and intrebity in action while serving as a machine gun squad leader. He completed his service in the Marine Corps in 1971. And for over 40 years, Alfredo has lived in Woodland Hills, working in the construction trade, building homes in the valley and greater Los Angeles. Now, he gives back to his community. He does many different things. He performs songs with his guitar at convalescent homes to bring cheer to residents and their families that are going through difficult times. He also does a lot of work with his church, Our Lady of the Valley in Cudahoga Park. And Corporal Castillo, he is someone who epitomizes the amazing contributions that immigrants have made to our armed forces through his service with the military. Now Alfredo also holds another very important title. He is also the father of Cecilia Castillo on my staff, and so I want to... I want to thank you, Alfredo, for two things. First, for your service to this country and your service to the community, but also for producing such a wonderful daughter who serves this city every day. So thank you for that. Also, from my district, an honorable mention to Lieutenant Colonel Elmo E. Maiden, who piloted 35 combat missions in a B-24 bomber plane as part of the U.S. Eighth Force during World War II. He couldn't be here today due to some health reasons. I was actually happy to celebrate with him and his accomplishments, because we recently celebrated his 100th birthday. So, Alfredo, I'd like to give you this certificate on behalf of all of us here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blumenfeld. Next, I'd like to invite Councilmember Rue to introduce the Veteran of the Year for the Fourth Council District. Councilmember Rue.
Thank you, Mr. Kokorian, for bringing this important presentation and bringing these heroes to City Hall. You know, veterans are our heroes, not just for their services in our armed forces, but because of their continued service, no matter where they are or what they do. Being a hero is about who you are, the standard of honor and courage you exemplify, and a lifetime of service that you lead. A military man or woman will not just serve in active duty, but throughout his or her life. And in many cases, that spirit of service continues far beyond the battlefield. I am proud to say that Marine Corps Sergeant and LAPD Hollywood Officer Donovan Anderson is one of those heroes. Officer Anderson was born in Eugene, Oregon. Following in his father's footsteps, he volunteered to join the United States Marine Corps and completed the rigorous Marine Corps boot camp in his mid-20s. Anderson was trained in the 81-millimeter mortar weapon system and was attached to Second Battalion, 23rd Marine Regiment, in Pasadena. Despite being a reserve unit, 223 was deployed several times during Operation Enduring Freedom. Officer Anderson and his unit were sent to Ramadi... Ramidi?
Ramadi.
Ramadi, Ramadi, Iraq, for his final tour in 2019, 2010, when upon returning to Los Angeles, he joined the Los Angeles Police Department. Since serving in the LAPD Hollywood for nearly 10 years, Officer Anderson has been an esteemed law enforcement official, known for his courage, his honor, and his sense of duty to protect and serve. Officer Anderson works the Hollywood entertainment detail and has seen quite a few things in his time there. He was recently awarded the Police Star for his lifesaving action in an intense situation. Officer Anderson is one of these many heroes among us in the city of angels, a man who not only served our country overseas, but serves our city every single day. Because of people like him, our city can sleep safely at night, knowing that there are people protecting them. Officer Anderson is a sterling example of what public service really means. His career is an inspiration to me and to all of us, and to anyone who strives to serve the people of Los Angeles. I am proud to have him working the streets of Council District Four, the Marine Corps Veteran and LAPD Officer Donovan Anderson.
Thank you, Councilmember Rue. Next, I'd like to invite Councilmember Paul Corretts to introduce the Veteran of the Year for the Fifth Council District. Councilmember Corretts.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kokorian, and thank you for bringing this to council. It's truly wonderful that we get to recognize some of our heroes whose service was so vital. Today, I'm honored to celebrate John McNeil, a UCLA Emeritus Professor of Education and World War II veteran, who's proudly served UCLA since 1956. Just as we celebrated UCLA's centennial this year, Professor McNeil also celebrated his 100th birthday today, actually on October 29. I hope that when I turn 100, I'm in as good shape as he is. He continues to teach at UCLA's Graduate School of Education and Information Science at age 100. John grew up in Iowa and moved with his parents to San Diego before World War II, and he signed on for duty in the U.S. Navy during World War II at a recruitment center near UCLA. And in 1943, was assigned to the USS Achernar, an attack cargo ship that was deployed to Europe to lead Operation Neptune. John was serving onboard as a gunnery officer when the ship was headquarters for the Allied Forces invasion of Omaha Beach on the Normandy coast of France on June 6, 1944, which of course was D-Day. Mr. McNeil also served in the Pacific Theater as executive officer of a warship. He went to college with the aid of the G.I. Bill and began his career first as a classroom teacher and director of curriculum in San Diego Public Schools, and he helped to establish a combination junior and senior high school in San Diego in 1947. And his students were mostly families that had migrated west from the Dust Bowl in the '30s, much like his own family had moved from Iowa to find better opportunities during the Great Depression. He eventually became curriculum director for San Diego Public Schools before leaving for Columbia University to earn his doctorate. And throughout his career as a teacher and educator at UCLA, he helped to establish the university's commitment to social justice by preparing his students to teach in urban communities. In addition, as a faculty member at UCLA, he was able to give back to his fellow veterans by leading a program that provided teacher training for retired military personnel. Professor McNeil embodies, to all those who have had the fortune to meet him, the true Bruin values of respect, accountability, integrity, service, and excellence. Today, we honor Professor McNeil for more than six decades of service to UCLA, and thank him proudly for his service in the U.S. Navy, and celebrates his 100th birthday and the fact that every day he continues to inspire all of us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corretts.
I want to say much of this for all the educators you see who have made it possible. They're really great. I really do appreciate what you're doing and what other wonderful people have given me. It's this most generous world. I thank you immensely. I'm going to nod.
Mr. President, Councilwoman Norrie Martinez was not able to be with us today, unfortunately, but it was very important for her to make sure that her Veteran of the Year is appropriately recognized. She asked me to do so, and it's my honor to welcome and to introduce John Best. John is a proud lifelong resident of Panorama City. In 1969, John, during the Vietnam War, John went into the United States Army, and upon completion of basic training, his talents were quickly recognized by the Army, which offered him enrollment into the United States Military Academy at West Point. After that, he went on to serve in the 28th Public Information Office in Fort Carson, Colorado, where he wrote articles for the Army paper. Is that Stars and Stripes? A different paper? Okay. He wrote articles for a U.S. Army paper, and those articles were published across America and throughout the Army. It's safe to say that John was recognized then and continues to be a talented individual, and service is in his very nature. He retired in 2016 from NBC Universal, where he'd worked in the Mail Services Department, and during his time at NBCU, John joined their Emergency Preparedness Department, where he volunteered his time to train his colleagues on disaster preparedness and certification. He received many awards and recognitions for his outstanding service and dedication, and was a real asset to the company that they could always count on. The awards that John received include, but are not limited to, the Nancy J. Matthews Award for over 25 years of volunteering, the Sheryl McGarry Award for Outstanding Service to Universal Studios Disaster Response Team, the Comcast NBC Universal Gem Award for being the Production Department Employee of the Year, and many more. But after retirement, John just kept right on serving. His love for our country was translated into his love for his community, which he shows every day. In Panorama City, John spends just about every morning sweeping busy corners of Ann Eye's Boulevard and ensuring that pedestrians using public transit and children making their way to school have a clean and safe sidewalk to walk on. He holds community pride and puts his pride into action. John's been an outstanding community partner, doing everything from being an active member of his Neighborhood Watch to attending nearly every community cleanup in Council District Six. And just recently, John showed his commitment by attending the Clean Sweep launch in September, and during community cleanups, he rides with the team, picking up tons of trash and bulky items personally. He serves as a great example to the entire community, to future generations, and to everyone in the city of Los Angeles. And so, John, from everyone here in the council, from everyone in the city of Los Angeles, and especially from the team at Council District Six, I want to thank you for your kindness, your partnership in making our city a great, clean, and safe place to live, and of course, for your service to our country as well. Next, I'd like to ask Councilmember Monica Rodriguez to recognize the Veteran of the Year for the Seventh Council District. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Kokorian, and thank you for always organizing this very special tribute that we are so grateful, honored, and humbled by the presence of so many incredible veterans that gave so much in service, the heroes and the she-ros that are here gracing us with your presence. We thank you so much for your service to our country and ongoing service in many cases as dedicated public servants, and we stand here today because of your service so selflessly to our country, and so we thank you. But I am joined today by my Veteran of the Year, someone that I have come to know very, very well through his collection of memorabilia, and someone who has really continued to help make sure that our community and generations haven't forgotten the incredible selfless sacrifices that so many of our veterans have made. And so I'm joined today by our Silmar resident and Veteran of the Year, Art Guzman. He was born and raised in Pacoima and attended Pacoima Elementary, McClay Junior High, and San Fernando High School. He attended Valley College before being drafted into the U.S. Army in May of 1970. Art is one of 14 children, four girls and 10 boys. Seven of his brothers served in the military, three of them served in Vietnam.
Wow.
In 1973, Art married his sweetheart, Jeannie. They have six children, who blessed them with 19 grandchildren. And since 1986, Art has created and shown Vietnam military memorabilia and displays them at schools and classrooms across Los Angeles. He, in fact, brought that collection. He does have his own museum, if you will. It's pretty phenomenal, Vietnam memorabilia, but it was on display at our first annual salute to veterans that we held in my district on Sunday in commemoration of our Veterans' Day celebrations in the northeast valley. And it was a... And it was a phenomenal display, and it was incredible, I think, to share and showcase with so many members of our community. Art has also volunteered with our L.A. City Crisis Response Team for the last 13 years. In fact, one of the last responses that he was involved in was the MetroLink accident back in 2008. Art, we salute you and thank you for your incredible service, and to everyone that served in Vietnam, welcome home.
And next, I’d like to ask Councilmember Marquise Harris-Dawson to introduce to us the Veteran of the Year for the 8th Council District.
Thank you so much, Mr. Krikorian, and as always, thank you for creating the space for us to have this important celebration. Before I bring forward the Veteran of the Year from the 8th District, I wanted to make a note, because all of us as Angelinos have neighbors who served in the military who can’t be with us today because our country has rewarded their service by deporting them to Mexico. And so, we have groups of soldiers that are Angelinos that are in Tijuana waiting for sanity to return to the United States. And I wanted to make sure we took this opportunity to call out their names. And I want to call forward our representative and our Veteran of the Year from the 8th District, Sergeant Damon Johnson, who served in Operation Iraqi Freedom as a member of the Marine Corps, 1st Marine Division, 3rd Battalion, walked into the line of fire on behalf of the cause of the United States of America, had the job of going into towns after the first wave of soldiers had gone through and making sure that the buildings that the Iraqi Army used were no longer operable. So, he became a demolition expert in his service in the military. But like many of our soldiers, they learn how to do what’s needed in the given situation that they’re in. And so, in Iraq, he tore down buildings, and he came back to South Los Angeles, and he’s building up buildings and building communities. And so, give him a big round of applause. I met Damon, I think, almost 20 years ago now. He was working on the campus of Crenshaw High School, teaching students how to be active for a better quality education, and has continued his civic service from that time, whether it was called, being called on by our Assembly Member to serve on the Steering Committee for our Assembly District, being called on by the head of the Democratic Party to be a part of the Steering Committee there, representing school employees at both Animo and with the California Teachers Association, and all-around stand-up citizen for Council District 8, and a great example of what it means to serve your nation, to give of yourself, and then to come back and to use those talents to build up the community that you live in. He’s a business owner, a homeowner, and a father of two. Kind of reminds me of my dad. I have a brother, and my dad was also a veteran, and so, so I know the three-minute shower and the making your bed in four minutes and shining your shoes, all of it. And I know he’s passing that on to his boys as well. And so, I ask you all to join with me in congratulating the 8th District Veteran of the Year, Mr. Damon Johnson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harris-Dawson. Next, Mr. Price is not with us today, so, Mr. President, I’d like to ask you if you would introduce to us the Veteran of the Year for the 9th Council District.
Thank you so, so very much, Mr. Krikorian, for doing this on a yearly basis. And I, you and I have had conversations. I know this comes just straight from your heart. So, as your colleague, friend, and president, I thank you for making sure that at least on this day, we remember those who are not afraid to go into harm’s way to ensure that we are safe in this great country. I too come from a family where my dad served in the Army and two of his three brothers did as well. I did not go to the Army because my parents in that generation made it safe for me to go to college. We go to bed every night in this nation feeling safe and sometimes taking for granted that freedom. But we all recognize that freedom is not free, and we want to thank again each and every one of you for your service to these United States of America. Can we give our veterans that are here? Today, I am pleased, and Lord knows, I am honored to present to you a young man, Chief Warrant Officer for Vernon J. Dayton, Dayton. I’m from Ohio, so I know Dayton, Dayton, Ohio. But he was born and raised in Kansas City. In 1973, graduated high school and chose to enlist in the Army, where he did his basic training at Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri. The man to my right served three and a half tours of duty in South Korea, three tours of duty in West Germany, seven tours of duty back in this country at Fort Bliss, Texas. And he was a part of the Southwest Asian operation and participated in Operation Iraqi Freedom. He allegedly retired on July 31, 2003. But members, he did not stop there. After 30 years, 30 years of service, he did not stop. For the past 16 and a half, almost 17 years, he’s been the senior instructor of the JROTC program at Manual Arts High School, mentoring our young people, mentoring the next generation. So, I say to you, Chief, because of you, we all feel safer, we all feel better, because you are preparing the young men and women that will continue to defend this nation in the future. Ladies and gentlemen, a big round of applause for Chief Warrant Officer for Vernon J. Dayton.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I got to stick this in real quick, because the chief told me, whenever there’s a big event, he always provides the color guards for Mr. Price and for me. So, let’s give him another round of applause. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, I’d like to ask Councilmember Bonin to introduce to us the Veteran of the Year for the 11th Council District. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Krikorian. As everybody has said, thank you for doing this. I thought I was really going to wow you by bringing in a 96-year-old, and then, of course, Mr. Kretz decided to top me with a 100-year-old. And Mr. Colonel Dick Littlestone, my honoree, is unable to be here today due to a health issue, but I wanted to acknowledge and celebrate him today. His photo, along with his wife Doris, is up on our screen today. Colonel Littlestone was, I almost brought him in, I think, two years ago, and Supervisor Kuhl actually had already lured him down to the Board of Supervisors to give him a similar honor there. Colonel Littlestone is a resident of Pacific Palisades, who had a long and distinguished career in the service and in education, and then recently accomplished a 20-year mission to increase the space at the National Cemetery in West LA on the border of my district and Mr. Kretz’s for the remains of veterans. The Colonel moved to LA in 1929, when he was six years old. He graduated from the U.S. Military Academy in 1947, and a year later, he married Doris, his wife of 67 years. They’ve got three kids, Richard Jr. and their daughter Nanette, who was born while Dick was serving in Korea, and a youngest son, Mark. He served in the Army for 33 years, and he earned a number of different decorations, including the Legion of Merit, the Bronze Star, and more than a dozen other medals. He then went on to a career in teaching, serving as Chair and Professor of UCLA’s Department of Military Science and as the Associate Director of the UCLA Computers and Information System Research Program. He then spent a lot of time volunteering, notably on the 84 Olympics Youth Activities Subcommittee, whose report then led to the creation of LA 84. But it was 20 years ago when he embarked on a determined mission, a campaign focused on expanding the capacity at the LA National Cemetery, which is, as I said, the Veterans Cemetery in West LA. Since the closure of that cemetery to all new internments in 1997, he persistently prodded a succession of VA secretaries and any official at any level of government who could write or call a VA secretary or anybody anywhere in the VA bureaucracy, to construct a columbarium annex for LA veterans that would allow more veterans to be cremated and buried at the local VA cemetery. After 10 years of prodding, he prevailed, and the project was approved, funded, and planned. But that wasn’t enough, because it hadn’t happened yet. So, he kept pushing. He kept pushing, he kept pushing, and a couple of years ago, construction started. And I am very, very glad to say that just about a month ago, it opened, and the mission of two decades for Colonel Littlestone was finally achieved. He was there, he was the celebrity, he was the star of the day. And as he said that day, and as he has said before, and as he will say again, he was driven sort of by two reasons to do it. One is he thought it was the right thing to do for veterans, that they deserved more space there to be honored and recognized. But there was also a very personal reason. His wife Doris lives in Pacific Palisades, as I said, wife of 67 years, and he did not want her to have to drive all the way to Riverside to visit his grave once he passes. And so, it was for his fellow veterans, and it was also out of love for his wife. So, I really wish Colonel Littlestone were here today. He is, he’s an amazing man. He has the tenacity of Ms. Rodriguez, the intellect of Mr. Krikorian, the charm of Mr. Wesson. He’s quite a character, and I will bring him here when he is feeling a little better, because everybody deserves to meet him. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bonin. Next, I’d like to ask Councilmember John Lee to introduce our Veteran of the Year for the 12th Council District. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Councilmember Krikorian. Today, I am proud to honor Barry Leone, Barney, sorry, Barney Leone. Barney is not only Council District 12’s Veteran of the Year, he is a friend. He honored me by doing the Pledge of Allegiance at my inauguration. When we told Barney we were honoring him, he said, “That’s fine, but you are picking me up.” And so, I was proud to, you know, share that time with Barney, because he is full of so many amazing stories. He really, truly is living history. He is a youngin. He’s only 95 years old. I still don’t believe him. I was guessing around 75.
That’s the truth.
Oh, I don’t, I don’t believe you, Barney. But, you know, Barney was drafted in June of 1943 and assigned to the Navy.
Yes.
And after basic training, he was trained as a diesel engineer, engine mechanic, and assigned to the USS Namaskit.
Correct.
In November 1944, the ship had just refueled, been refueled by the larger USS, I hope I’m pronouncing, Missanewa. Opting not to stay tied together for the night, Barney and his fellow crew member unfortunately awoke to heavy black smoke coming from the USS Missanewa, which had been just hit by a Japanese suicide submarine. Both ships were preparing for the invasion of Okinawa, and during the battle for Okinawa, Barney’s ship was actually attacked by a kamikaze airplane. Fortunately, the kamikaze airplane was shot down by crossfire from other ships covering the Marines’ landing in Okinawa. While serving, Barney was also able to watch from his ship the iconic moment of the raising of the flag at Iwo Jima. I want to thank Barney for his service and for his passion to the veteran community. Every Monday morning, Barney and close to sometimes 100 other members, veterans, meet at Wendy’s Restaurant. It’s called Wings Over Wendy’s. It’s in Councilmember Blumenfield’s district, and they meet together to share stories with each other. And more importantly, Barney spends his, volunteers his time to speak at local schools to share the personal stories of World War II. And I am so proud to be honoring Barney Leone as our Council District 12 Veteran of the Year. Thanks, Barney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. Next, I’d like to invite Councilmember Mitchell O’Farrell to introduce us to the Veteran of the Year for the 13th Council District. Mr. O’Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian, and I think Council President Wesson said it best when he said, “This comes from your heart.” I think you do all of us proud every year when you host this wonderful recognition of the men and women who have sacrificed so much for this country, past and present. And I am in awe of every honoree that I’ve heard about so far, and I hope we can let that serve as inspiration to all of us in our call to public service. I want to acknowledge my Veteran of the Year, our honoree, Samu Noah, from the 13th District. Samu Noah is an immigrant from American Samoa and a Vietnam-era veteran in the United States Army. Two weeks after graduating from high school, he enlisted in the United States Army as Rank Specialist 5, job title Veterinary Food Inspector 91R. His most valued skill that he learned during his service in the military was becoming a tennis professional, in addition to serving. While in the service, one of his favorite memories was playing in a tournament in Hawaii representing the Fort Sam Houston team, and that plays into what he currently does. Samu is a 15-year veteran within our city’s Recreation and Parks Department. This past week, he organized a Veterans Day celebration to recognize our local veterans in the 13th District in the Atwater Village area. So, his service is part of his DNA, and he lives it and teaches it every day. He’s also the founder and president of the Samurong Tennis Association. It’s a 501(c)(3) charity that focuses on providing tennis programs and activities for economically disadvantaged children. This association has been serving our community in Southern California for the past 25 years. Samu believes that tennis is a great sport and plays a significant role in his family, including that of his wife who’s in attendance. I’d like to acknowledge Montez Noah, who is right here. Welcome. Thank you so much. And in the spirit of all of the veterans gathered here today, in the spirit of both of my grandfathers, my father, several uncles, a number of cousins, and then the next generation of nieces and nephews, I come from a long line of military family. You honor all of us by your selfless dedication and sacrifice to this great country, my honoree, Samu Noah. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. O’Farrell. Next, I’d like to ask Councilmember Jose Uizar to introduce us to the Veteran of the Year for the 14th Council District. Mr. Uizar.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Krikorian, for beginning this wonderful tradition we have here in the City Council, to welcome our veterans and thank them for their service. And also, it’s just so humbling and what an honor to be amongst so many veterans here in our council chambers. Thank you for your service. You know, I was born in Mexico, and I’m proud of my immigrant roots, but I’m equally proud to be an American citizen. It is this country that is the beacon of hope for so many... It is this country that is the beacon of hope for so many people throughout the world. It's an ideal place to raise a family and to have that opportunity. And I often think that it is because of our veterans who have defended those ideals, defended what America believes in, why so many people throughout the world look at America as a place to come and live. So, thank you on behalf of all of us for your service. And it's my great honor to acknowledge today as the Council District 14 Veteran of the Year, Al Collins Strange. He is someone who is active in many activities and community events throughout Northeast Los Angeles. I think councilmembers who represent the area know him quite well. I know him not only as the 14th Council District Veteran of the Year, but also, I consider him the historian for Northeast Los Angeles. If you see him right now, this is one of the very few moments that you'll see him without that camera around his neck. But he did bring it, by the way, so it is here. Mr. Strange is an Army veteran who spent 1966 through 1967 in Vietnam. He was assigned to the MACV as an Army medic. He was born and raised in the east side of Los Angeles. He attended St. Odilia's Elementary, and then went on to the great Solisian High School in Boa Heights, my alma mater as well. He participated in track and field before being drafted into the Army. In addition to his military service, Al continues to serve his community by serving on various community organizations, including the Boys and Girls Club, Men Educating Men on Health, an organization that provides free clinic services to men and women that can't afford medical attention. And he has served as President of the Northeast Democratic Club. For five years as President, he has ensured an increase in voting registration and voting outreach so that more individuals could be part of the democratic process. He is a proud resident of Highland Park, where year after year, he is an organizer and participant to the Highland Park Christmas Parade, the second-oldest Christmas parade in Los Angeles. He remains committed to his military roots by also organizing the Northeast LA Veterans Parade and started the first-ever solemn ceremony in Igerock, we call it City Hall, Igerock City Hall, a few years ago. He is a proud resident of Highland Park, I'm sorry. Al loves to go hunting and fishing on his spare time, and enjoys watching classic movies and going to theaters with his beloved wife, Vanita Strange. And thank you for being here, Vanita. I hope. Al is the proud father of Alton and Brandon Strange, and grandfather of Sophia and Simone. Al is truly someone who has never stopped serving, whether it is to his country or to the people of Los Angeles. And he has worked to inspire to take on community activism and participation to another level. He is most deserving of this honor, and we want to thank Al for not only his service to our country, but really being an example of what it means to come back and serve our communities. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, congratulations for being the 14th Council District Veteran of the Year.
Thank you, Mr. Wezar. And now, finally, on behalf of Council District 15, home of the USS Iowa, I'd like to ask Councilmember Buscaino to introduce the Veteran of the Year for the 15th Council District.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. I too want to echo my colleagues and express my deep appreciation to you and your entire team. Each and every year, you put on this great opportunity for us to recognize our veterans and our heroes and sheros in our city. And I want to thank you, Paul, again, for leading today's presentation. Colleagues, and you remind me, the USS Iowa in San Pedro, in the harbor area, we're so rich in history, the military history that calls a home to the Drum Barracks in Wilmington, the Fort MacArthur in San Pedro, and of course, our living museum of the USS Iowa. But today here, in honor and on behalf of the entire Council District 15, I'm pleased to introduce to you our Veteran of the Year, George Palazio. He was born and raised in San Pedro and returned back to his community after years of service, and I know him well, an honor to call him a friend. And after graduating Mary Starr High School, he joined the United States Coast Guard with dreams of becoming a firefighter one day. Upon graduating boot camp as a fireman, he was stationed in Nostoria, Oregon aboard the United States Coast Guard Cutter Cowslip, 180-foot seagoing buoy tender. He was trained in hazardous materials response and maritime firefighting, and also went through forest firefighting training with the Oregon Department of Forestry. In May of 1997, the Cowslip was struck by a 747-foot freighter, Evergreen Evergrade, and the next two years were spent by his crew in dry dock making the ship seaworthy once again. In 1999, he was transferred to the navigation team, where he spent his last 18 months in the Coast Guard maintaining navigation equipment and lighthouses along the Washington and Oregon coast. And I love when he shares a story of his experience in maintaining lighthouses on the west coast. After his service, George returned home to San Pedro, where he remains a very active member of our community. He worked with the Union Pacific Railroad as a locomotive mechanic for 12 years, and then became a stay-at-home father after his first son was born, and a community activist, once serving on the Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council, working alongside the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce, and is an active member on the Little Italy Los Angeles Association Board of Directors. And the reason why I wanted to bring George here this year is because in partnership with the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce, George came to me earlier this year wanting to recognize our veterans and active servicemen and women in San Pedro. And he led an effort with the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce to the first inaugural year of the Military Banner Program in downtown San Pedro. And the banners were recently installed last weekend. And if you were to drive down Sixth Street, you'll see banners recognizing our veterans as well as those active servicemen and women. And I was able to pick two, and my two banners recognized John Fur, a POW from Vietnam War and a local hero, and also an active serviceman, Joey Damacoli, serving in the United States Marine today. So, George, thank you for your service. Thank you for your commitment to our community in honoring our veterans and active servicemen and women. We recognize you today, we love you, and we honor you on behalf of the entire Council District 15. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Buscaino. Mr. President, as we close, I'd just like to take one moment of personal privilege to note that both of our Navy guys this year are World War II veterans, and both of them served on ships off the coast of Okinawa during the invasion of the final Battle of World War II on that island, protecting the Marine Corps as they went into their biggest, bloodiest battle of the war in 1945. And both of those Navy guys were helping to protect those Marines as they hit the beach. And one of those Marines was my dad, Rick Krikorian. And so, if it weren't for Barney and for John and all of those who were serving in the Navy along with them, could very well be that my dad wouldn't have made it, and I wouldn't be here with you. So, to you two especially, I want to thank you very much for your service. And to all of our veterans, thank you. Thank you, colleagues, for giving us the opportunity to recognize the best among us.
Mr. Krikorian, what about a brief recess? We take a photo of all of our...
What I'd like to do is ask if the veterans could join us in the center here, along with my colleagues, so that we can take your group picture.
So, we're going to recess for a minute.
Okay, again, congratulations to all of our honorees. Thank you all for your service and your commitment to our country and our city. Sure. So, if we can, we have some more business here to complete here. If we can just quiet down a bit or start making your way out, that'd be very helpful. Thank you. Okay, if we can clear the center aisle. We have general public comment. Okay, is there a Ron Beatty? Ron Beatty, please come forward. How about a Rob Quan? Is it Mr. Beatty? Is that you? Okay, fantastic. You all have one minute to speak on a non-agenda item, general public comment. Good morning.
Good morning. And good morning to the council and staff. My name is Ron Beatty, and I'm here to remit the failing of the Phase III project. And for the mayor and the city council to require the DCR to vet all 800 applicants for Phase III licensing and who have frauded the pre-vetting process, you have a fake property leases and are subleasing, and cheated the Excela system must be eliminated and banned from the process in accordance with the council president's recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Rob Quan, next speaker, followed by Jabari Jomani.
Good morning. This weekend, in the LA Times, Councilmember Rue said, what we're, he was caught up in some developer flack overtaking contributions, and said, "What we're trying to do is probably more comprehensive than what the city is going to do." That's the worst news I've heard in a long, long time, and a really bad sign for what's going to happen Friday and what's coming down the pipeline with reform in the city of LA. I find it particularly funny that the council member highlighted the difficulty of identifying who's behind certain contributions. That is because of corporate and LLC contributions, non-individual contributions in the city of LA, and the current package of reforms does nothing to combat that, does nothing to combat political money laundering. The federal government has had a ban on corporate contributions for over 100 years, since 1911. Just last week, the city of San Francisco added LLCs and LLPs to their corporate contribution ban. That's something we should do here.
Thank you. Jabari, followed by Daniel Ignite.
Good morning. My name is Jabari Jomani. Once again, I'm in front of you as the Director of the Afiba Center in South LA, where we have a comprehensive program to benefit the residents of South LA and LA in general. We recently, as you know, have received an unwarranted and retaliatory eviction notice from Marquise Harris Dawson. We don't think that it's too late for cooler heads to prevail and for this to be rescinded and for us to get from this regime of the Council District 8, something we've never had, support for our program and support for our community. This is a very interesting time when people all around the world are pushing against regimes that are corrupt, and we will join with them in continuing to fight for our rights. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ignite, Daniel, Antonio Ramirez? Hold on, ma'am. Is Antonio here? Please go forward. Thank you, please go forward. Go ahead, ma'am.
Greetings, council. I honestly don't even know where to start. It's truly unfortunate that when an elder steps up here and he's trying to speak, he's already having a hard enough time, and then he gets no respect. No one is looking up at him or even attempting to inter... No one is looking up at him or even attempting to understand what he's saying. Our elders over at the AFEBA Center have provided a lot of help and assistance in the community for the people that you guys have forgotten about, deliberately forget about, deliberately set to the side, or not pay any attention to, and unwarranted eviction letter. And then like, how does that work for systems that are the little bit of systems that are left in our community to keep it together? It seems like at every corner, you guys are ripping away at the stitching to keep the fabric in place, and then you wonder why all hell is breaking loose in the streets. It is truly unfortunate. Give thanks.
Thank you. Antonio Vera Jones, please come forward. Vera Jones. Followed by... Hold on, Antonio. Vera Jones, please come forward. Thank you. Is there Brandon Brinson? Please come forward. Go ahead, give Antonio her one minute.
Please, thank you. Thank you. The United States Supreme Court justices need to nap on the DACA case. The United States justices are supposed to interpret the rule of law, making sure that the American people in America are first and foremost safeguarded, which these justices have failed miserably. Now it's time to give these unpatriotic, un-American, unethical, pandering, treasonous liberal justices the royal boot out for having committed high crimes against America that have assisted in subsidizing foreign criminal felons from all over the world at the cost of the American lives. Thus, you must lawfully and expeditiously rescind the unlawful DACA program due to its unconstitutionality by Barack Obama, the faggot CIA operative who illegally became president and did not get Congress's approval. Thus, this DACA program is null and void on its face. Hence, deport, deport, deport all Dreamer assholes stat. And God bless Marquis Dawson for being forthright, where we do not want military veterans deported. God bless you, Councilman Marquis Dawson. God bless you.
Okay, next speaker, please.
My name is Brandon Brinson. The most important thing in business is honesty, integrity, and integrity, which neither has been shown by, at all, by the DCR and the Cannabis Social Equity Program. As of today, my team and myself have spent out $112,000 in rent alone in the 10th District for the last two years waiting on this social equity program that you guys promised us. And to see how you have allowed it to change and go opposite, go the opposite way of what it was originally intended for is gut-wrenching. Now it's about to be the holidays again. You guys are about to go eat Thanksgiving dinners with your families while others sit in misery and defeat. Is there anyone in this building or watching by TV that can help us? It's not fair that the ones who really be here in these meetings getting the information and put in the work get tossed to the side while the cheaters get all the glory. Can anybody help us? We need Mr. Wesson to implement Rule Number 16 of the...
Thank you. Thank you. Is there Lynn Shay? Lynn Shay, please come forward. Marco Juarez, followed by Evelyn Scott. Go ahead, Mr. Juarez, you're up.
Good morning. My name is Marco Juarez, and again, I'm here trying to look who can help disabled tenants to stop all the harassment, intimidation, retaliation, and discrimination by Los Angeles Housing Community Investment Department, especially for these criminal investigators, Joseph Placencia, April Aguilar, Evelyn Araujo, Marilena Diaz, Letitia Bates refusing to conduct my case since I filed the case in English. She says, "No, I cannot help you. File another case in Spanish." Thus, discriminations against low-income families, disabled Hispanic tenants. Everyone is celebrating about the proposition 187N, Mr. Cedillo. Who can, who can help disabled tenants to stop all discrimination? That's period. Thanks for your help, and I hope someone can do something about it. Thank you. And especially recall Mayor Garcetti.
Okay, next speaker.
Hi, my name is Evelyn Scott, and I'm a Phase 3 Tier 1 Social Equity applicant in District 10. I'm faith-driven, relentless, and determined. For over two years, we have stood before you fighting for social equity. Two years, we have had a property that is built out and ready for business, yet it sit in defeat. We have stood before you pleading for funds to start the social equity program. Now our funds are depleting. Who pays our leases while you decide if you're going to address this failed process? We have stood before you asking that you support people who were greatly impacted by the war on drugs, those ready for business, and those who have held on to properties for years. The council decided to do the first-come, first-served process of 100 applicants. Council members, that process failed. Right the wrongs and process all 800 applications. Everything I have and own is invested in this. We need your support. Social equity is a concept that applies concerns of justice and fairness to social policy. What we are experiencing is social injustice.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Is there Ian McMillan? Please come forward, Ian McMillan, followed by Ms. Jefferson Carey. Followed by Lynn Moses. Is it Ms. Jefferson Carey? Is that you?
Yes, it is.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Rochelle Jefferson Carey. I'm a mother, I'm a wife, I'm a daughter. I'm an Angelino. I've been here over five decades, and I was born in East LA at White Memorial at Venice Hospital. I went to LA Union. I graduated from LAAA. I worked for LA Unified. And I bought my first home in View Park in Marquise's District, District 8. I stand before you because I went to the DCR meeting October the 24th, and I was very dismayed about how information was being presented. I commend our council president for writing the letter on October the 28th saying, "Hey, something's wrong. It's egregious. Let's get it right." He said three things: to suspend, refund, and to audit. So if you're not going to do those three things, he also said to give all the 802 licenses out to the people. That's it.
Thank you. Lynn Moses, please come forward. Followed by Arnold Sachs. Arnold, make your way to the podium, please. Mr. Moses, good afternoon.
Thank you, sir. All glory and honor to my father, who served in the armed forces of this country as well. Mr. Rue, Mr. Lee, members of the Jewish community that come through, hats off to you. You represent your communities. The problem with the black community is we have no representation. Even when they're sitting here, their empty suits, the seats are empty. We have Herbert Wesson, king of homelessness, and sellout corrupt Marquisi Dawson. What do you call a representative that says, "Damn, screw his constituents and negotiates to have the state EDD office, one of our resources, negotiates to have a permanent office for himself, all because corrupt Dawson wants to be a big shot on Crenshaw Boulevard for Destination Crenshaw Gentrification Project, which the constituents do not want?"
Thank you. Madison Shockley. Go ahead, Arnold. Okay, we get, yeah. Just hand it to the sergeants, thank you. Arnold Sachs.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. And listening to the descriptions of today's presentation, first of all, thanks to vets. My dad was a vet, but I was thinking about some movies, Saving Private Ryan, where the typist got into combat. I was thinking about Apocalypse Now, when the surfer, when the guy who was the helicopter Colonel found out he had a world-class surfer. You know, it's all circumstances. And when you enlist or you get drafted into the military, you don't automatically drop out a social injustice, it's only it gets worse. My dad served in the Philippines in World War II. Took two bullets, one in each shoulder. Got a field promotion by stepping over his supervisor's blood coming from the supervisor who'd been shot in the head. But the most important thing my dad taught me was about, was anti-Semitism. He walked into a New Jersey State Highway Patrol Office to report vandalism on his new car and heard some anti-Semitic remarks, punched out a New Jersey State Highway Patrol officer, and walked out of the building with his blood on his shirt.
Thank you. Mr. Shockley, is it?
Yes. I just want to say that it's not just Herb Wesson and Marquis Harris Dawson who are responsible for the social equity program. It's everybody on this council. It passed overwhelmingly with over 85% support because of the economic justice that could take place for people in their districts, but also the security that was going to be provided in the market in your districts as well. And that's not happening as long as licensed shops don't get online. The illegal shops thrive. We need more licenses. The city of LA doesn't have enough dispensaries, and it's destroying the whole market. It's distorting the whole market because there's not enough outlets for the product, and it's not working. You guys didn't fund the program at the beginning. That was you all's responsibility, and that caused a lot of these failures that we're experiencing now. That's why you're responsible to act and not just let this corrupt system go forward as if you're not responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Herman, come on up. Herman, followed by Wayne. Mr. Herman, will you please turn the light on your phone off? It's very difficult to look in that direction. You're distracting this meeting. Turn off the phone. Turn off the light.
So as you know, the insidious scheme. Get over it with harmful effects. The experience of influence of corruption and disease. The disease that I encounter by being targeted simply because the color of my skin is an issue of racial profiling, because you don't accept it. Long habits of abuse, fraud, waste. We should all be concerned of corporate greed. Los Angeles is corporate greed. Where's Wesson? Where is he? Why doesn't he come out here and face social equity? Give us a permit and let us allow equity for cannabis. Fuck you, 42 U.S.C., 1983.
Hey, Wayne, come on up. There's no need to scream into the mic. We can all hear you. Okay, Herman, you're now distracting the meeting. You're disrupting the meeting. That's your last warning. Herman, that's your last warning.
So let us not forget today the two draft dodgers that we got here on the council. Herb Wesson, 68 years old, Kern Price, 69 years old, eligible for draft in the Vietnam Conflict, as that fucking Monica Rodriguez calls it, the Korean and Vietnam Conflict. Yes. So Herb Wesson enrolled in college, never graduated, so his ass didn't have to go ship over to Hanoi and do his duty. And Kern Price went to school in Italy on a scholarship from Stanford to avoid his service. And you got the nerve to let these people introduce veterans when they are goddamn draft dodgers. I listened to it on the phone. I got veterans all over the family. You make me sick. Wesson, you are a piece of shit. Have another cigarette, scum.
Hey, Eric Previn, come on up.
Thank you to Mr. Krikorian for honoring the veterans. My father was a major in the US Army. The liability payouts are 40 million in the first quarter. If you multiply that by four, that takes you to 160 million. That is 35 million over the 125 we have allocated. The LA Times wrote an opinion editorial about LA City is in financial peril again. They were referring to the significant labor cost uptick. Now, I just want to say, I support labor, but I don't support rampant liability fighting. Leobek Temple is suing the city, the county, and the state, and we're going to treat it just like Gutfroy. There's no merit to the case at all, as the government officials who are fighting it know, but there's a little weirdness going on. Hashtag Mike Fure, Mr. Krikorian, just like Gutfroy, where we're going to have a big celebration case about, and then settle it, because of course, the government can't be liable for a false incident that corrects shamefully scapegoater-in-chief, scapegoater-in-chief. I can't believe it. I can't believe it, sir.
Thank you. Your time's up. Thank you. Okay, that concludes general public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before us? Your name, ma'am? Come on up. Okay, let's give her a minute. Go ahead. Your name, ma'am?
My name is Brianna Gonzalez-Mia Marie Hayes-Elmore. That is my name.
Go ahead.
Okay, my comment is, the further comments that I've been applying to myself for longevity, for myself, for my career, for myself, has been validated inappropriately, but I have to make sure that I'm controlled. So at the same time, I come here for my time span for one hour, for other states and plus globally, to align of what's aligned already, because I grew up on San Jose Military Base, and because I'm aligned perfectly, that's why you guys are sitting there and other people jobs are sitting there as being well, properly advised, properly based off my merits. So basically, what I'm saying is, with my comments of my issues, why is not being validated? I'm listening.
There's no back and forth here. Thank you so much for joining us.
Exactly, there's no back and...
So ma'am, next time, make sure you fill out, go back to the kiosk and just complete the form on the kiosk. Okay? Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk? Ma'am, you... Go ahead, come on. We have one more speaker here. I know you've been patiently waiting. Again, for members of the public, please be sure to fill out the form on the kiosk in the back. Your name, ma'am?
Hello, good morning. My name is Vera...
Lift the mic. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Vera Jones, and I grew up here in Los Angeles. I'm retired now. This is my granddaughter, Sandria. She turned three on Veterans Day. So I wanted to speak to you in reference to the AFEBA Center, and this has been a part of our community since I was a small child. As a young child, it was a fire department. So now, that is a location where we have community involvement. We have educational things. We have mentors. We have things that we don't have any longer, like the team posts. And with this center, we would like to make sure that it stays there for our village, our community, city of Los Angeles. And we would like to stop the attempt, the control of what Marquis Harris Dawson has put on the table. So if you can look into that, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk? What's before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They're posting a referral. Do we have another member of the public that forgot to fill out a card? What's your name, sir? I may have missed you.
Good evening, sir. My name is Kevin Payne.
Yeah, I called you earlier. Okay.
You did?
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm a social equity advocate, and I'm an Angelino. I was born and raised here. Got my undergrad at UCLA, got my MBA from Pepperdine. I was affected by the drug wars when I was going to college and I was caught with marijuana. It caused me a lot of grief, and I don't believe it's fair for, right now, for people to be able to sell it legally, and the other people who are affected are kind of like held back. I think it would be a little more fair if, even though I might not fall into that realm, maybe to maybe just allow maybe, maybe, instead of maybe having 100 licenses, maybe, you know, 200, 300. The city of Los Angeles has maybe a shortage of marijuana dispensaries, and there's only like 1.5 dispensaries for every 100,000 citizens.
Thank you. All right, let's try this again, Sharon. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting a referral.
They're posting a referral.
And that clears the desks, sir.
Fantastic. Announcements, members? Any announcements? We can all rise for adjourning motions, please. All rise, if you're able, please. All rise. Look to my left. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. The community of Bow Heights is in mourning as we lost a great leader. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Daria Nunez, a loving wife, mother, grandmother, sister, friend, parishioner, and devoted community advocate. Daria Nunez was born in Durango, Mexico on December 19, 1958. She immigrated to Los Angeles in 1978 with... She immigrated to Los Angeles in 1978 with her husband Pedro and settled in Boll Heights' Pico Gardens in 1988. Daria was a woman of strong faith. The faith helped her love unconditionally. She forgave anyone and everyone, including those who hurt her, and she gave of herself without expectation of anything in return. In the early 1990s, Daria began working as a teacher's assistant at Proyecto Pastores La Guarderia, Early Education Center. At this point, Daria became more involved in the community, quickly gaining a reputation as a strong advocate who fought for the well-being of everyone. Daria became involved with LA Voice Pico as an organizer, leading campaigns and efforts in Boll Heights and throughout the city for causes such as immigration reform, affordable housing, and increased safety in neighborhood streets. Daria served as LA Voice's board for five years. She also served as hakla, as a hakla commissioner for five years advocating for public housing development across the city. In 2010, Daria and a few community members from Dolores Mission Church identified a gap in summer programming for youth in the area. Daria and her colleagues created their own summer youth program called Jovenes Seguros Verano Divertido. They developed a program that included an academic curriculum, nutritious lunch meals, and physical activities. And this was after she had survived the 1990s in the public housing projects where there were deaths every day by our young people's gang activity. Daria was responsible for many improvements in Boll Heights, including various stop signs, a new traffic light on Fourth and Pecan, and a coming installation on Fourth and Clarence. Boll Heights will also see a new dash route that will run by Dolores Mission Church thanks to her advocacy. Daria helped strengthen the relationship between LAPD and the community. She organized many commuting forums and a wide variety of topics. Daria brought people together from all walks of life. She had a wide and diverse group of friends throughout Boll Heights. She became the go-to leader for my Boll Heights staff. They turned to her for advice on how to handle controversial issues like gentrification, housing, and development. Daria was involved in all aspects of Boll Heights and shared her honest and thoughtful opinion, always offering solutions that kept the best interests of her community at the forefront. She knew exactly who to call in times of trouble and in times of need and oftentimes and many times she kept the peace in our community because she was able to talk to both the LAPD and gang members in the area. She saw my staff and family as an extension of her own family. She showed us love and support through good times and through difficult times. For that, we will always be grateful. She was a very happy person. She liked karaoke, cooking, and dancing. In her last weeks, she took, she looked forward to Thursday evenings when her friends came over to play LoTalia. She was not afraid to advocate for what she believed in. She was the type of person who refused to take no for an answer. And still, everything that Daria did was done with respect, humility, and kindness. She was an extraordinary human being who put the interests and needs of others before her own. She was the rock of Pico Gardens. Her passing leaves a large void in the community. Our deepest condolences to Daria's husband of 41 years and her childhood sweetheart, Pedro, her children, Dariana, Georgina, Edman, Antedo, and Jenny, her eight grandchildren, her siblings, Daria's countless friends, Daria's countless friends in Boll Heights and throughout the city, and all those she left behind will deeply miss her. May she rest in peace. A great leader in Boll Heights and a great advocate for those most in need. God bless her and her family.
Thank you. Looking to my left, to my right, Mr. Lee.
I'd like to adjourn in the memory of my good friend Dave Hassan. Dave Hassan passed away last Thursday after a long battle with cancer. Dave, as a person, always helped wherever he could. He was more than just a community member to CD-12. He was a family member, that type of community member who, if he had a meeting with you, wouldn't even bother stopping in the lobby. He would just walk through the doors and go straight to your desk and no one blinked an eye. Because Dave was that person that whenever a nonprofit needed fundraising or anyone needed help, he was always our first call. And he's going to, it's going to be a big loss for our community and our office. Dave had longstanding relationship with CD-12, but no greater relationship than helping us build the North Valley YMCA, which is now one of the most successful YMCA's in LA Metro's system. He helped us build that in 1999 and served on countless, countless boards, too many to name here. Dave is a huge loss for all of us and we'd just like to adjourn in his memory. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Believe Ms. Rodriguez wanted to add to that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, John. I didn't realize that Dave had passed. That's a shock and devastating. Dave was a really good friend to all of us in the North Valley. I had the privilege of serving with him, as you did as well, on all the fundraisers for the North Valley YMCA. But he was also just an incredibly true personal friend. He, whenever you needed him, he was there. You know, when I first ran for this seat in 2007, he stood with me when many other folks didn't. And he was there again in this last round. His loss will be felt very deeply in the North Valley. His contributions to programs supporting youth, just anything good for the community, he was just, you'd always find him there. So, yeah, I'd like to add myself to the adjournment.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, I'd like to ask that we adjourn this meeting of the council in memory of an extraordinarily gifted and talented young actor and philanthropist who died far too young, Cameron Boyce, who died unexpectedly in his sleep of an epileptic seizure on July 6th. Cameron was a resident of North Hollywood. He began his entertainment career as a dancer who got his acting start in commercials but had a meteoric career. He had already amassed a string of impressive film credits, including appearing alongside Adam Sandler in Grown Ups and Grown Ups 2. He had roles in Mirrors at the age of nine and the indie feature Runt. He played Carlos Oscar De Vil in the three installments of The Descendants film series. And then really was a very well-known and respected television star. He was starring in the upcoming HBO series Mrs. Fletcher and starred as Luke Ross in the Disney series Jessie, which was his breakout role and which he starred for four seasons. In 2017, Cameron received a Daytime Emmy Award with Disney XD for his participation in the series Timeless Heroes: Be Inspired, which was in honor of Black History Month. He appeared alongside his grandmother, Joanne Boyce, who was one of 12 black teenagers who were the first to integrate the public schools in Clinton, Tennessee. Cameron was very active in many social causes, including the fight against homelessness, promoting clean water, fighting against gun violence, and offering young people alternatives to negativity and violence. In 2018, he was honored for his work with The Thirst Project by bringing awareness to the global water crisis. He raised more than $30,000 to build two wells in Eswatini, formerly known as Swaziland. Cameron's untimely passing was a shock to his fans throughout the country and to all of us in his community. It occasioned a series of heartfelt tributes from colleagues in the film and television industry. Adam Sandler called him "just the nicest, most talented, and most decent kid around. Thank you, Cameron, for all you gave to us." So much more was on the way. His co-star on Jessie, Kevin Chamberlain, said of Cameron, "He was an extraordinarily talented actor, a selfless advocate with his charity work, and a loyal friend." Cameron's mom, Libby, is with us today accompanied by his uncle Greg Small. Libby works for Los Angeles County on homelessness issues and Greg volunteers on the Western Los Angeles County Council of Scouts BSA. Cameron is also survived by his father Victor and his sister Maya. His family and friends are, and fans throughout the country are trying to remain positive as they carry on Cameron's legacy through the Cameron Boyce Foundation, which focuses on bringing safe drinking water to remote areas, programs to help counter gun violence, and epilepsy research. They honor Cameron by staying true to his core ideal, which is to leave something in the world bigger than ourselves. Cameron inspired thousands, hundreds of thousands of young people around our country and hopefully they, in his passing, will take up the sorts of causes that he was so instrumental in addressing and make a difference in the world themselves as Cameron did for our country and for our community. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Krikorian. Ma'am, just know that your son lit up my home. My kids loved watching him on TV and brought so much joy and the stories that he shared really touched their hearts. So he rest in peace and may perpetual light shine upon him. So with that, members, we are now adjourned. Let us go forth and serve the people of the great city of Los Angeles.